Good evening and welcome to the Akron Public School Board meeting on June 9, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Dr. Thompson, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Reverend Harrison.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molinar.
Here.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent.
May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Autry?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Autry. Next, we'll have recognitions by the Superintendent. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to begin with our final recognition for the Superintendent Book Club of the Month focusing on the month of May. For Elementary with Kayden Abdullah Lim Thomas, please stand. Is Kayden present? Could you please come forward, Kayden? Kayden, you can come right up here next to me. Can you come right up here? We are recognizing Kayden, who is a first grade student. She is a first grade student at Leggett CLC and Kayden read thirty-one books. Congratulations, Kayden. Here you go. Is there somebody here with you? Who's here with you? You want to tell them to come up and take a picture with you? You gotta tell. Go right over here and you're gonna take a picture. Excellent. Congratulations, Kayden. And representing middle school with the most books read, Peyton Usecheck? Usecheck, I'm sorry. Come on up, Peyton. That's an awesome job, Peyton. Sixteen books. Way to go. We are proud of you. Is there somebody here with you this evening?
My father and sister.
Okay, tell them to stand up. Say, "Stand up and come take a picture." We are so proud of you, Kayden. Okay, Peyton's family's coming up. Thank you for encouraging her to read. Do not stop now. Continue to read over the summer. And our final student is representing high school, North High School to be exact. Is it Mohammed Adi Mushtaba? Is Mohammed Adi here? Okay, is, if there's no repor-- oh, Mr. Morrison, can you step up and represent North High School? This is our principal, Mr. Morrison. Please make sure that this is delivered and congratulations. Okay, and then we want to give a special shout out to these schools that don't go too far, Mr. Morrison. So representing elementary with two hundred and sixteen books read, Betty Jane CLC. And representing middle schools, we have higher is our, oh, I see Ms. Sax coming up. Come on, Mrs. Sax, represent your school. Congratulations on encouraging your students to read and not do all those TikTok videos. Good job. And Mr. Morrison, would you come up and represent the high schools having the most books read? At the high school level? So as our students prepare for summer break, I encourage parents to support and motivate your children to continue to read during the summer months. Research shows that independent reading offers numerous benefits, including improved reading skills, increased vocabulary and comprehension, enhanced critical thinking, boosted confidence, and a lifelong love of reading. So let's work together to help our students keep their minds active and engaged all summer long. Thank you. Now I would like to award the GOAT Award for Greatest Operations in Attention-to-Task Award. We are excited to announce that the next GOAT Award goes to Brett Dale, Head Custodian at Garfield CLC and Principal Catherine Roedocker. Please come up. You didn't give him time off to come get his award. That's right. So this special recognition celebrates exceptional work ethics, professionalism, and dedication to their craft for the month of May. And we are thrilled to have such hard workers. If you've been recently, Garfield has hosted several events for the district, our Employee of the Year Recognition Program. And most recently, they held our two high school graduations, our alternative school graduation and also, yes, APS Online. So thank you for opening up your doors and keeping the building looking great. And Madam President, Chair, that does conclude the recognition portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. And again, congratulations to all of our scholars and our schools. Next is the request to address the board. Before we go into that request, there's a portion that I typically always read. In addition to that portion, I've been reminded of the board policy, which states that twenty minutes of board meetings will be designated for community comment. And so we'll be adhering to that. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Please state your name and your group affiliation as well. Thank you. We, the first person we have is Citizen Carla Chapman. I added it.
Thank you, President Jackson. Good evening, Board Members, members of the public. My name is Carla Chapman and I'm an Akron resident and a member of the Citizens Committee for the Akron Public Schools. This group of community members remain dedicated to supporting our district. They represent a broad range of business, civic, faith-based, nonprofit organizations, and residents of Akron's neighborhoods. They worked to raise funds, secured endorsements, and votes for the approval of our Issue Twenty-Seven School Levy in November 2024. One of the agreements made last December by the members of this group was to continue to meet periodically throughout the year, even during non-campaign periods and especially during non-campaign periods, to keep the lines of communication open and to engage our community members as informed ambassadors and advocates for the district. So to that end, we will host our next meeting of the Citizens Committee for the Akron Public Schools on Tuesday, tomorrow, June tenth at four PM at ten North Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Next, we have Kofi. Kofi Boaake? I'm sorry, say it. Boaake, Kofi, Kofi Boaake.
Good evening, everybody. I moved a lot of stuff in my schedule to be here, but I had to ask myself a question. And I even debated being here, but I was like, "Kofi, if you had the opportunity to save the life of someone or something that once saved you, would you do it?" And unequivocally, my answer was yes to that. So good evening, everybody. My name is Kofi, and I know many of you may know who I am and what I do, but maybe I never told you why. So allow me to put some paint where it ain't for you, if that's all right with you. Let me take you back to 2008, where I went to this school called Finley Academy, now CLC, as you all know. And at the time, I was excelling academically and musically, but I'm not gonna lie. Playing piano and getting good grades was not quite the recipe for popularity at that time for myself, and I got bullied a lot. But I do remember that one day, the music teacher, Mr. Brian Johnson, I'll never forget him, he allowed me to play the piano in front of my peers that day in class. And for the first time ever, with all that negativity I was experiencing, even my haters had to be quiet and listen to that talent that I was letting out. And I think later on that week, I don't know, Mr. Johnson must have called the principal, who then called my mom and said, "Look, I love Kofi at this school, but he shouldn't be here. He needs to be at Miller South." And we had no idea where Miller South was at that time, but I understood that apparently it was a place that nurtured talent to kids like me. Because at Finley, I was a nuisance and I was a nerd, but at Miller South, I was a future star in the making, a future leader, a future three-time Emmy-nominated musician, a future Apollo winner. I was him to them. I'm here for obvious reasons. I'm here because I understand that the future of a school that I have called home lovingly for five years of my life and have perpetually given back to for well over a decade since graduating is quite frankly, under attack. I'm here because I've understood that there are three options, and two of them quite frankly, sound just as ridiculous as I've read them to be. And I say "to" because I got love from my Pfeiffer people, too. Because I understand, look, these people back here, they made the right votes and they made the right choices, and you made the right promises. Miller South has to stand alone. I mean, there is no way I can even remotely imagine a school like that, as I heard it to be in one publication, absorbed into another. Absorb? What does that even mean? Who created these options? I don't know, but I'm telling you, whoever created them must have never played an instrument that they loved, wrote a poem that they liked, or even had an arts and crafts project that their mama was proud of putting on the refrigerator. I understand that systemic problems require systemic solutions for all of you, but catch this, I mean, the creativity in the community of our kids, it can't be viewed as a casualty or looked at as collateral because of your poor budget management. It just can't happen. These kids didn't create these budget issues. You and your predecessors did. And, and look, I understand that you have some saved some money in the short run, but I think that when I look at the future of a program like Firestone's ASA program, what does that truly look like when you completely ripped out the foundational fabric of the school that helps build those kids to be what they are to begin with? So I understand you have tough decisions to make, my brilliant board members, but understand, these kids, you're not, you're not cutting cost, you're not cutting costs here. You're cutting dreams. These kids have terrific dreams while you have tough decisions. So please don't be the reason why a person that looks like me can't see the potential in their purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kofi. Next, we have Cynthia Blake Stokes.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, School Board President and Miss Superintendent. First, before I start off, I just wanted to say, I don't come down here to dim somebody's, to make my light shine. The question just has to be answered or asked, who's going to be held accountable for the shortfall of the Kenmore situation with Pfeiffer and Miller South, discovered by the new Superintendent Mary Ottley, and probably possibly a problem with North High School? The Treasurer's Office and the Superintendent's Office are equal roads. Is that not correct? They both report to the board. So that means that the Treasurer does not report to the Superintendent. Okay? They report here to the board. These budget misses by the Finance Committee and the Treasurer's Office have to be exposed. They must. I look back six months of the meetings of the Finance Committee to find when this was ever discussed, and not one meeting can I find in the archives where it said that the projects were in trouble. I went back six months. These budgets missed will cause possibly another school levy or put communities against each other. And Kenmore does deserve for it to be rebuilt with Pfeiffer and Miller South. All these stories being ran by the media, but never getting to the root of the problem. But anytime one of the members called the newspaper, they quick to tell them to pull these emails and then they go run a story. But when it doesn't fit their narrative, they don't want to run the story, not to get to the root of the problem. I just need that the community to understand the Treasurer and the Superintendent are equal. It wasn't the Superintendent's fault nor the previous. It's the Treasurer's Office and the Finance Committee that's supposed to be overseeing it. He was looking for a job last year. We would have been left hanging in the bag figuring out what's going on here. Every time when a meeting's been going on, I looked at about six months of those meetings, you'd never had, the Finance Committee never had questions for the Treasurer, but you got ninety-nine for the Superintendent. Ninety-nine of them. Thank goodness for the Superintendent trying to partner with the City of Akron to get the money necessary to build this school. But the late Ray Charles could see that there needs to be some accountability and some termination, but you just don't want to do it because you favor them. That's why you don't want to do it, because of just favoritism. But we're watching you this time for accountability on the budgets and open the books.
Next, we will have, thank you, Ms. Blake. Next, we will have Jessica Grandalski.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jessica Grandalski and I am a public school teacher and an Akron parent. I am here to speak about Miller South. Parents and students want the school to be rebuilt in the Kenmore neighborhood as promised. And I believe that with the last Friday's joint board meeting, the choice ahead seems perhaps a bit easier with the mayor's support as well. People often say that Miller South is unique, a magical place, and it's true. When I witnessed what the kids have done with their creative talents and what the teachers have done to integrate the arts and develop an enthusiasm among the students, I agree. Just look at what that former student showed us. Too much of school. His skill and drill with a focus on just mastering the concepts for the required end-of-course exams that we all know are there. Too little is focused on creating a love of learning, on creating lessons that truly engage the students in a manner that reaches their interests and makes them want to wake up and be excited about their school days, especially in these pre-high school years. But this school offers that, and I truly wish that all did. But for the moment, an issue at hand, to select an option which would limit these rich educational opportunities, which the third option would do, would be short-sighted, irresponsible, and quite frankly, indicative of not truly understanding either what the school does or why it matters to kids. I'm assuming you've all done a good deal of research on the value of arts integration in the classroom, and I'm hoping you're familiar with the school and what makes it distinct with this choice in front of you. This is not just a matter of kids doing a little art while learning, but a researched pedagogical approach to education that has data behind it. Arts integration encourages students to broaden their thinking, and isn't that what we all want for our kids? In 2022, the NIH published a longitudinal study demonstrating the impact of music learning on the academic achievement. I'm sure, long-term, and I'm sure you know, the influence is substantial. The daily and seamless integration of this kind of instruction at Miller is one of the keys to its success. I'm happy to send those studies on if you'd like. We all know that many people living here take their Ed Choice money and use it elsewhere, and I hate that for APS. In the case of Miller South, however, people want to come to this school. They even come in from other districts. I had a student this year who was from Miller South, and I teach Far North. It's been said by others, but I think it's important to repeat, if we lose Miller South as we know it, if it becomes just a subsidiary of another school and not its own unique opportunity, people leave. Families won't come for the school, and they will seek other options. It's stark, but when you compare the performance index numbers, eighty-point-seven at Miller versus fifty-five-point-four at Litchfield, you can see why people are not as comfortable with option three. Mayor Mala gave other reasons for supporting the first two options as well. I want to believe that each of you truly has the kids' best interests at heart and that you truly want to support one of Akron's finest schools. If that is the case, then working with this city seems more important than ever. Please do what's in your power to make the choice to honor the promise you made for Miller South and not seek to dismantle or diminish it in any way. The kids deserve their new building, and the Kenmore neighborhood deserves its promised institutions. Thank you for your service and dedication to our kids.
Thank you. We have eight minutes remaining for public participation. Kelly Brown, Ms. Kelly Brown?
My name is Kelly Brown. I'm a longtime resident and homeowner in the Kenmore neighborhood, third generation to live in that neighborhood. I'm here to ask the members to honor your promise to the Kenmore community. Build both Pfeiffer and Miller South on the site of the demolished Kenmore High School. Pfeiffer and Miller South on the site of the demolished Kenmore High School. From where I live, at the very north end of Kenmore, Pfeiffer is walkable. None of your other options are walkable. And I live in a neighborhood where not everybody has a car. We need to have a school in walking distance. From Pfeiffer, they can walk to after-school programs, the library. Walkability is more important than you might realize. The Kenmore community is very supportive of families and children, food cupboards, community meals, summer programs, holiday events, a free store, school supply giveaways. All these things are supported by individuals, businesses, churches, other nonprofits, organizations, clubs in the Kenmore neighborhood. They're committed to making Kenmore a community you want to live in. Service and advocacy are Kenmore values. Fulfill your promise to Kenmore. Our community will be actively watching your actions. We will not forget your decision. Your words are meaningless if you don't follow through with action. And our action, we will be watching and we will vote to express either our support and gratitude or our disappointment and disgust. Your vote will determine how we vote.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next is Rich, I think it says Aseem Rich. I'm sorry. Yes, Rich, last name is Rich.
My name is Allison Rich. I'm a visual art teacher at Miller South. And tonight, I'm asking you to do whatever is necessary to rebuild Miller South in Kenmore and not attach us to Litchfield. When members of Kenmore asked for Pfeiffer to be rebuilt, they also asked for a specialty school to be placed in their cluster. They asked for Miller South because they know that art can transform a community. When you said that it would happen, you set the ball in motion. And in anticipation, we've already seen several projects that have begun on the boulevard. Next week, APS students will be starting a new mural on the boulevard through the University of Akron Meyer Schools of Art. And Better Kenmore placed art created by Miller South students in an empty storefront to brighten the space. And hundreds of people attended our large spring art show that we moved to Kenmore in anticipation of this partnership. And I cannot tell you how excited people were. All people were talking about was, we can't wait to get into this neighborhood. How wonderful is this going to be? The idea to attach Miller South to Litchfield might be the least expensive, but to me, as a teacher in Miller South, it does not make sense. Perhaps this was an option because I know there's a belief in the community that most of our students come from the Firestone cluster, but that is not the same anymore. Since we changed our audition process to make it more equitable, next year, we will have students from almost every single elementary school in APS coming to Miller South. Another example of how you set things into motion is, I see when I look at the data of our incoming students next year, the largest number of incoming sixth graders are from the Kenmore cluster next year. In fourth grade, Kenmore has the second-largest percentage of APS students. So what does this show? This shows that Kenmore's parents are reacting in anticipation of the rebuild that you promised. Also interesting, our second-largest incoming group is actually from outside of APS, which brings open enrollment funding to our district. We have more parents wanting their children at Miller than we have room for. We do have students on a wait list. Doesn't that beg to support a rebuild? I keep wondering why Miller South has had to fight so much to get a new school. The only answer I can think of is that Miller South is successful. Now, that doesn't make sense, but perhaps the thought is that we don't need new facilities when things are going well. We opened 32 years ago in an old refurbished building, so why would we need a new one when our test scores are above state averages and we have kids getting recognition? We have Emmy winners. We have kids receiving national recognition for their creativity year after year. But despite that fact, we have students working hard to reach those goals in a building that's crumbling and it leaks. But if we had a new building, I can only imagine how much more we could give our students. I would like to ask you to keep your commitment to rebuild us in Kenmore. I worry that if we are added to Litchfield as an afterthought, it will be a quick fix. And when support for the arts is pulled, it rarely comes back. And we are all counting on you to give us the facility that we need and so greatly deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our final person to address the board is Alena.
Aleni. Good evening. My name is Aleni, and I am the Executive Director of Better Kenmore CDC. Just a few years ago, Kenmore was the second-largest neighborhood in Akron. We are now the fifth. Two of the neighborhoods that have moved up past us, they're West Akron and Goodyear Heights. What changed? Well, new schools were built. East and Buckdole. And even when it didn't make financial sense. It's true. What's that saying? Everyone knows it. Build it and they will come. I see those of you advocating for your alma maters. As an alumnus of Kenmore, I appreciate this. But as you deliberate spending millions on upgraded facilities like bus barns and sports facilities, remember your promise to the students of Miller South and Pfeiffer. Having played basketball and volleyball in high school, I recognize the incredible value that sports and recreation bring to our community. They offer our children opportunities to stay healthy, build teamwork, develop confidence, all skills that go far beyond the playing field. And every child deserves access to quality sports facilities, just as they deserve access to quality education. And that's why this conversation is not about choosing one over the other. It's about timing. It's about making sure our most urgent needs are met first and following through on the commitments already made. The promise of a new school gave many families hope, but as time passes and budgets shift, we see significant investments being made in a new sports complex while the school remains on hold. This isn't about questioning the value of athletics. It's about ensuring that our priorities reflect the most fundamental needs of our children. Education is the foundation. When that foundation is strained, every other investment, no matter how well-intentioned, becomes harder to justify. I believe there's a path that honors both commitments to ensure that the school doesn't fall further behind in the process. If we invest first in education, we strengthen everything else we hope to build, including successful, well-rounded students who will one day lead this community, as you've seen here today. So I ask respectfully, take a moment to realign. Let's make sure the promises made to our children about classrooms, learning and opportunity are the promises kept first. There is money if you're willing, and we've all heard about the opportunities that are put before you as a board to partner with others such as the city. Thank you.
Thank you. No, that was, she was our last one, but you can address us at the next meeting. You can sign up to speak at the next meeting. In two weeks. Uh-huh. Next, we will have Board Member Reflections. Dr. Molinar.
Always. Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say congratulations. It's our first official day of summer break. We made it. So congratulations, everyone. And as we wrap up the last school year, I wanted to share a few final reflections from last year. I attended the Buckdole graduation, and it was a beautiful day. We had the perfect wind outside. It was great on the field. And the student speeches and their encouragement for each other were really the highlight of the night. I'm sure the diplomas were the highlight of the night for most people because that's what we went there for, but the speeches were really, really great from the students. Also, summer school has started. I think today was our first official day of summer school. And as people are transitioning from last year to this summer to next year, and parents are looking at updates and wondering if the district will send out communication. Last Monday, we talked about that there's more communication coming, but also, there are a lot of families that are leaving the district. So I am concerned, I'm increasingly concerned about families who are leaving. And I'm curious to know what kind of data we're gathering as people leave, and more importantly, the recruitment and enrollment initiatives that we're implementing to retain families. Because I know from experience, effective outreach, like drip campaigns, they require multiple points of contact before someone makes a decision. And I've seen a lot of recruitment efforts from other schools around the area. And not only do I believe that our public schools are the best option for our families, but we also just can't afford to lose more students. So I'm wondering what we're doing to bring everyone back and bring everyone here. And I was wondering also, I'm going to try to fast-forward here. I don't have the time. I'm so confused. I'm sorry. So, oh, for the enrollment efforts, the reason I was wondering is if they would involve board members, if there's anything that we would need for volunteer or something like that, because we need to plan for our summer too. But it's also something important in some places that we might want to be and we might need to be. So that's what I was wondering, if someone could send me that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Molinar. Are there, Member Hall?
I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates of 2025. I had the pleasure of attending Northeast and Firestone's graduation. And when I tell you, these students were so excited to celebrate one another, you know, and that speaks volume on their relationship building and their friendship. To wrap up my school year, from all the buildings that I attended, I did attend Garfield during the school year. I see why they got the award, very clean, very nice. Students would see trash, they would pick it up, they would throw it in. So it was a village. I was impressed by the principal having her office on wheels. So she never really sat in her office. She had it on wheels where she walked around with a cart, checking things. The seniors were getting ready to leave. That was their final day, but they couldn't leave until they got, until they signed off on a form she created. By every single teacher had to sign off on each form for the seniors to make sure they were graduating, had all their work together. So I appreciated that. I said, God, I wish I would have had that in high school myself. I also appreciated that students that came in late, you know, they went up to the principal and she said, did you eat? And they said, no. She said, go get some food. You know, and they were really excited. They went and got their food. And again, I appreciate our students eating because they can't focus without having something in their belly and ready to learn. They had 13% growth in Algebra I, which was very, very commendable. And one of the teachers, who was Teacher of the Year last year, she was one of those teachers. And she complimented Mrs. Stefan, who was also an algebra teacher, stating that I would not have been able to do it nor be Teacher of the Year without her. So that mentorship program is very, very important for our teachers. I also attended Buckdole Signing Day, and all this information was during the school year, so this is old, but I had so much, I was talking about each meeting. But they had their signing day. It felt like an NBA draft. Those students were so excited to get announced with schools they were going, their GPAs and so forth. And then also, I attended Bridges. And you know, Bridges gets such a bad rap because, you know, everyone thinks it's just for bad kids. But some of those kids have other issues, not just being kids that get kicked out of school or anything like that. They have the highest rate of R special needs students. But one thing was concerning that they don't have any pathways at that school, and they're our children. So I encourage the superintendent and our pathway instructors or coaches to, let's see about getting a pathway into Bridges, so that when they do go back to a traditional school, that they have those same skill sets as everyone else in our traditional schools. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other board community reflections? Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. They're putting up on the screen, we got a email from Sergeant David White, who is our supervisor for our SROs with the Akron Public Schools. And I just wanted to say thank you to our SROs, to Sergeant White, for keeping us informed about what's going on with our officers in the schools. And sometimes we get, we focus on so many things that we forget that our officers play an important role in our schools, and they have a lot of positive contact with our students, and that is building relationships. And hopefully, those positive interactions and contacts with our students will go with the students into the community. So I just wanted to kind of thank Sergeant White for sending us the emails. One of, in his email, he outlined that the officers themselves say that they enjoy working with our students and our staff. The SROs this year have gotten 13 commendations. We've had one SRO save a student's life. We've found an item in a bag, in a bookbag, that should not have been there. The SRO intervened in time. So just a lot of positive impact with our SROs, and we want to say thank you to them and just acknowledge the good work that they are doing. Certainly want to take just a moment to speak to the community. We have not, as a board, collectively voiced anything concerning Kenmore, the Kenmore community, Miller South, Pfeiffer, because we are gathering information. I'm not sure how the Litchfield situation got out, but that, I don't think any of us have, we haven't had any conversation. So we hear you, we read your emails, and the only reason why we are not commenting about it is because we have not collectively engaged in final decisions. I would hope that we would do that sooner rather than later. But we do hear you, we do read your emails, and we are making this work. And I just want to thank the city of Akron, and it has always been, I haven't heard anyone on the, on the board speak against LFI money. I believe that that, that's taxpayers' bunny, and the taxpayers passed that quarter percent tax increase to build schools. And so my belief is that it's all going towards building schools. That's my belief as a board member and as a taxpayer. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Harrison. Are there any other board member reflections? Member Altri?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to congratulate all of our graduates. I believe we had over 1,000 graduates this year. And just many thanks to the families and the village who helped those students get to that point, and especially our teachers and other staff members. I had the honor of attending Firestone's graduation and was able to give a few remarks. They had 30 valedictorians. I was really impressed by that. And so, but congratulations to them and to all of our graduates as well. And then I was able to attend the State of the City address since we last convened. Very, very hot day, but a beautiful lock-three facility. And I look forward to collaborating with the city on some very important decisions. I too acknowledge the many emails from our Miller South and Pfeiffer families as well. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Altri. Are there any other board reflections? All right, seeing and hearing that, we'll move on to the president's report. I would like to report, as many know professionally, I'm in the field of education, but I also volunteer throughout my sorority and other organizations like Carol K. Stubbs for scholarship for students. And so I'm excited to announce that we had some additional Akron Public Schools students receiving more monies. Kennedy Mitchell, who attends Firestone High School, you may, her name may sound familiar because she received over $8,000 from Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated in our cotillion. But she also received an additional scholarship award amount for another $1,000, for another scholarship that we offered to the community. And this is for students who are graduating seniors or who are currently in college. And so she will receive an additional award for $1,000. Also, Cortland Thomas, who attends Firestone High School, she also is a recipient of Akron Alumni Chapters Chasing Graduation Scholarship for $1,000. And Michael Lewis, who was a student in Akron Public School, now attends Kent State University. He also is an award recipient. So I was excited to share that with you all, to show that surely our students are not only striving and achieving academic excellence because these GPAs were 3.8, 4.1s, and even his collegiate GPA was honors over honors over a 3.5. And so I think that is something that we need to celebrate, that not only do our students do well as they are graduating seniors, but once they attend college, that they still are thriving. Additionally, I also had the opportunity to attend the AAA graduation, Akron Alternative, and it was at Garfield High School. The principal, Ms. Green, and her staff did a wonderful job, but the energy and that you could just feel from the students. And as we say, it's alternative, but so it takes a certain level of intestinal fortitude to come back when you only have seven credits and you need 21. And to do that in an academic year, it takes a certain level of grit as well. And so we really acknowledge our students who do it through the traditional pathway. But there's something exceptional that when you're faced with obstacles and bumps in the road, that you still excel. So I definitely want to acknowledge those learners as well. Additionally, well. And so we really acknowledge our students who do it through the traditional pathway. But there's something exceptional that when you're faced with obstacles and bumps in the road, that you still excel. So I definitely want to acknowledge those learners as well. Additionally, as we continue to speak about our commitment to transparency, responsiveness, and elevating students and community voices, I had two concerns that were shared with me. One was about a parent of an elementary age child, and she just talked about some challenges that she was experiencing accessing qualified services and inconsistent communication with staff. I wanted to address this because as we said as a district about being transparent and understanding we're better together to find solutions to these problems. This parent, this specific parent's child has tested as gifted. And when we talk about keeping students and retaining them in our district, especially high performing young students, it's important that we put everything in place to meet the needs, because if not, parents will do what they feel is best for their child. That is an individual's parent's most precious asset. We collectively as a board can have certain comments about those things, but a parent's number one concern is their child. And so I told that parent that I would acknowledge it and make sure I share it with the board in this capacity, so all board members could hear, and as well as the community, that we acknowledge that. We are still committed to academic excellence. We do mean what we say when we want to serve all learners and to make sure that we are giving the proper resources when needed. Additionally, there were concerns raised about building levels, safety procedures, health aid protocols, and communication practices among school staffs. I know that these, these type of reflections sometime are difficult to hear, but they do provide us with valuable insight into areas where we must improve to ensure that families feel heard, respected, and supported because they are our customers. And if we want to retain enrollment in our district, we must treat them as such. And I think I'll end there for the respective time. That concludes the President's report and reflections. Next, we'll have the superintendent reporter updates.
Thank you, President Jackson. I would like to begin by making an announcement about one of our scholars. Our APS family is currently in mourning. It is with deep sadness that I inform you of the loss of a student who attended Bookdo CLC. And we just ask that you please keep his family in your thoughts. The family decided for her, for their child to be an organ donor. And the organs saved the lives of six more people. So we want to rally around the family and during their time of need, because that's what we should do as an APS family. So I just ask for a moment of silence at this time. Thank you. Looking ahead at the month, we have some important dates coming up. Our Career Nurse Assistance Day is June 12th. For all you fathers out there, especially you APS dads, we're going to actually give you Sunday, June 15th off, so that you can enjoy Father's Day. June 19th is the day that we celebrate Juneteenth, and schools and offices will be closed on that day. And our National HVAC Tech Day is June 22nd. At this time, I would like to ask Larry Johnson if he would join us at the mic to share some exciting information about the Ohio Department of Higher Education Grow Your Own Teacher College Scholarship.
Madam President, Madam Superintendent, and the rest of the board, I'm really excited about Father's Day off. It's, I appreciate the gesture. It's super exciting. So from our last, I don't know when it was our last, maybe April's instructional policy meeting, I did a present, was it April? I did a presentation on our Grow Your Own, some of our branches and strategies. So our Grow Your Own Scholarship Program, which is an Ohio state project, is designed to help school districts across Ohio recruit their own students and staff to become teachers within the district. Recipients of the Grow Your Own Scholarship agreed to teach for a minimum of four years at their home school district in exchange for a scholarship of $7,500 for four years. We offered the application to over 100 candidates. 67 completed the application. We have, we got the news in earlier this week, we have 22 candidates that have been waitlisted and are waiting for additional funds, pesky budgets. But we do have seven candidates that were awarded scholarships. These seven candidates are Breon Brady, Chelsea Young Farina, Justice Caldwell, Monica Spates, Ryan Gearhart, Tevin Tejge, and Tyrese Benson. These are all Akron Public Schools employees, substitutes, paraprofessionals that have all agreed to the scholarship and will be future employees, teachers for Akron Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Johnson, very quick question, because you just answered a question that I asked a couple of weeks ago, but you gave a different answer because you said Akron employees and stu-, you threw students in there. So do students qualify for this Grow Your Own?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Johnson. Is it too, I know it's a waitlist, because we have a student that just graduated to Tanya Griffin, and she wants to be an educator. And I believe she's attending the University of Akron. And this would have been a wonderful opportunity.
What school does she go to?
I'll make sure I send that to you. I wanted, I believe she may have went to either Akron Early College or Tanya Griffin. I'll find it.
Tanya Griffin? I'll, I'll look it up.
Yeah, she graduate, she was a participant in the cotillion.
We probably can talk offline. There's some, there's additional options for our current students. We have two students that are waitlisted for this particular, two of our current students that are waitlisted for this particular scholarship. We have several students that are going into education that are receiving scholarships. We talked a little bit about the Harrington Scholarship, that's not this, but there are other opportunities.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. And for the community, we awarded this Sunday, the Hero K Stubbs, we actually gave them their scholarships. And what was so exciting is out of that 13, a majority of those students are staying in Akron, and they will be going to the University of Akron. And that is so exciting to hear, especially with the new plans that the mayor is talking about, the city of Akron, that that would be so great for them to graduate from Akron and work in Akron. So thank you, Superintendent.
I would like to thank all of our partners, families, and supporters who generously donate and provide grants to support our scholars. And just to let you know that your contributions are truly appreciated. A special thank you to the Akron Community Foundation for their generous grants to the Akron Public Schools. They have helped to serve our students in the Bookdo Cluster. It's actually their PTA, and they're hosting their West Akron Parade. So that when we talk about recruitment, that would be a wonderful opportunity for APS to participate in that West Akron Parade and have a table set up. And also, they awarded our Project Rise over $11,000 to help expose our homeless families to the arts. The Akron Community Foundation has, has distributed nearly $4 million in this quarter of issuing grants throughout the city of Akron. So we just want to thank them for their ongoing partnership. And so I heard several of our board members mention some statistics about this year's 2025 class, and I just want to add to that just a little bit. So you should see a PowerPoint, and it's going to start going through the slides, and I'm just going to read some information to you. So this year, 1,275 scholars made up our class of 2025. 3,136 students earned industry recognized credentials. 117,871 hours of work-based learning was completed. 704 students earned credit and 267 dual enrollment courses. 8,712 college credits earned through the dual enrollment program. And 29 of our students are committed to military service. Now I feel like I need a drum roll, because we're going to talk about scholarships earned by our Akron Public Schools scholars. And it totaled 19,428,481. So congratulations to our 2025 class. And these photos represent an event Sunday that Member Sykes and Member Harrison attended at the Akron branch NAACP. And there is one photo, I think it's going to take a little too long to come around, but I have to take just one moment. Are we gonna, oop, I guess that's the end. Okay, can we go to the Firestone slide real, really quickly? So this slide right here was indicating our K students did a clapout. So we wanted to thank all of our elementaries that participated in a clapout for our seniors. Keep moving. And this just captures some of the schools, the excitement that took place. Those are the seniors actually like turning their tassels and throwing up their caps. We love to catch photos. But on this slide, the Firestone student is my niece, and I just had to do a quick shout out because I'm, she was in the graduating class of 2025. So again, congratulations to all of our scholars. And I'm going to end with our Be Kind. Kindness often begins with opportunity, and the LeBron James Family Foundation continues to show what's possible when we invest in our students with love and intention. As part of this year's prom promise, the foundation partnered with Lindy's Bridal Shop to ensure each senior could find a dress that made her feel confident, seen, and celebrated. But this wasn't just about prom attire. It was about creating a space of love, sisterhood, and support. Each student walked away with not just a dress, but with a powerful reminder, they are worthy, they are enough, and they are deeply valued. So we want to take this opportunity to thank the LeBron James Family Foundation for continuing to pour kindness into our students, reminding them, when we believe in their potential, we help them shine. President Jackson, that's the conclusion of the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we will have the Treasurer's Report.
Madam President, members of the board, excuse me, and Superintendent Outley, just want to give just a, an update to make all numbers you've heard, but just want to say them one more time so that they start to emerge. So if you look on the, on the left-hand side, the 2023 project budget was estimated at $63 million. That estimate was put together by our architectural, our architectural firm, not the firm that's working on the project now, but at the time, it was GDP who put that number together for us, understanding that it was a three-year outbuild, and obviously we're well beyond a three-year outbid, build. So inflation's caught up with us, but at that time, there was $40 million in COPS, certificates of participation. We received all 40 million, it's earning interest. $15 million from ESER dollars that we moved over to, from ESER into a line item and holding it for this project. And at that time, our agreement with Mayor Horigin was a split of $8 million to us, $8 million to the city, was the LFI, which stands for Local Funded Initiative. Those were additional dollars that the state would not pay to build things like theaters, et cetera, et cetera, is what originally that money was for. So if you total all that up, it comes to 63 million. Then it came to our attention just a few weeks ago, that the project was at 76 million. You were all here when we asked the architects for, what's your number? And they said, we'll get back to you. So we just got hit with that number, just like you did. So that's at 76 million, which is a $13 million increase. But stick with me here. The COPS is now at 42 million, because it's earned $2 million in interest. We do need to start using, expending those COPS dollars, because if we don't, we're going to get hit with arbitrage, just like we are with the LFI money currently. So we need to get the project moving. $15 million stays in ESER, and if it were a $9 million split, because now the LFI money's also increased since that original deal with Mayor Horigin, we would be $10 million short. So again, current, current best estimate is 76 million. Next Monday, we are meeting with our architectural firm. So we'll update this before our finance committee meeting. But again, we're at 42 million in ESER, 15 million in, or excuse me, 42 million in COPS, 15 million in ESER. There is $18,339,000 in the LFI account. I am guessing, and I have to be upfront, I am guessing on what arbitrage is. I don't know that yet. We're collecting that information. That'll go to a firm that specializes in arbitrage. So the city, Steve Fricker and I are working to get that done. I can't imagine it would be more than that, but I'm, but I wanted to be conservative. So 17 million, if that were the number, and the city did agree to give us all of the LFI funds, then our project would be $2 million short, which I would submit to you, we would try to scale that back in design changes. So just smart engineering on the project to stay on budget with current, with the current dollars in our funds. So is that, does that clear? Is that helpful?
Are there any questions from board members for the treasurer? Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. You're, you're stating about the money with the city, but we don't know what we're going to do, they're going to do with that at this present time, right?
We're not, we're, we are correct.
Okay. So putting that number into this is really not helping us, because we don't know if we're getting that money or not, right? So how are we, how are you adding that money into this and saying if they give that to us, then we'll be $2 million, you know, but we can't depend on that money. We can only depend on what we have, correct?
Correct. My understanding is that we're working towards this as a goal, but you are correct. It is not a guarantee. And if that were the case, can you go to the slide backwards? Then we would be at approximately the one on the right, the $10 million general fund shortfall.
Okay, just to follow up. Member Hall, yes. Okay. So, and not, not saying anything about your job or anything like that, but we shouldn't be really like telling the public, I, I think, because then we can get our hopes up, and then it doesn't happen, right? So right now, we're still 10 million in the hole, correct? Just to confirm that.
Well, technically, we're 19 million in the hole.
Okay, so we're 19.
If you said, if you said there's no LFI money at all.
Okay. Because that's how we need to look at things, as if it's not even there until we get into the account.
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice President Alexander?
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. I have a question. What is, what is our plan if we don't get that money, and so we can still try to get the Kimmore project done?
Well, that would be, that's what we worked on, was coming up with some solutions. At least the group that was here wasn't happy with those potential solutions, and I don't suspect the community would be. But we would have to look at significant changes. And that's why we tried to, you know, in retrospect, I don't know if we opened Pandora's box without needing to. I'm not sure in retrospect, but we felt as an administration, if we're going to tell you this news, we should give you some options, which we did. That's why we did.
Yes, Vice President Alexander?
So our, our backup plan would be the other plans that we gave, you gave to us a couple of weeks ago?
Right.
Okay.
Well.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you finished, Superintendent?
If I may just add to what Dr. Thompson said, the goal here was not to create confusion. It was to be transparent. So that our job as the treasurer and the superintendent is to work together and to keep the board informed of our finances and the impact of the building project on those finances. It was not to root for anything. It was an awareness. And so the next question, as member Alexander asked, well, what are the options? Well, that's how the options came about, was just giving them as much information, not saying this is what you should do. These are options, as member Hall said. We're not sure what we're going to get in the LFI, and just as much information as the board can have to make a decision. And also for the city to make a decision, because if they don't know we need the funds and we want the funds sooner than later, then that slows down that process. So by having the LBR meeting, that allowed us to start that conversation or continue it, because they had had one prior to my arrival, to know that these funds are needed to continue with a project, so that fewer dollars can come out of our general fund. Can I?
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Member Molinar, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have so many questions, quite honestly. First, I'm going to confirm, we're not voting on anything tonight, so this is just for information. I heard you say we need to use the COPS money. I, I, I'm just curious what, what the timeline is for the building, what's happening now with the buildings? If we have money we need to spend, are we spending it? Are, is, is building happening? Is there a committee for the buildings that's meeting? I know in November, when I came back from the OSBA conference, I said that I spoke with some people from other districts, and it's very common in other districts to form a board committee anytime that there are buildings being open. I know we don't have a board committee, but I, I, I feel like I should say publicly, this is a hundred percent of the information that I have, is what's on the screen right now. We have communities who are asking, begging, concerned with information, and I feel bad because I feel like I should have more information to tell them, to let them feel better, and I, I don't. I don't. So I, I'm sorry. I, I heard your meeting with the firm. I guess some question, what, what is the timeline on the building and what's happening now? And what do we need to do to use the COPS funding?
Those questions would be directed to the person that's in charge of, of the building. The treasurer's office is not in charge of building the building.
One moment. Member, did you, I wanted, one second, member Harrison. Member Molinar, did you have, it looked like you had a follow-up, I didn't want to...
Thank you, because I, I think that is one of the points of confusion, that the treasurer's office doesn't build the building. The treasurer's office tells us how much money we, we might or might have for the building. So I guess let's start there. If community members or board members have questions about the progress of the buildings, where do those answers come from?
Thank you, member Molinar. And after member Harrison, I'll, Superintendent, I'll recognize you if you wanted to follow-up on that, or Treasurer Thompson. Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we, we've heard a lot from the community, and I think when, when we, I think we're going down a rabbit hole here, and, and I would ask that we would, as a board, that we would come together so that we can make a, a quick decision, you know, not, not too quick that we make the wrong decision, but that we can make, that we, we can get the answers that we need to make the decision. But I think when we come, you know, we, we're talking about LFI money, if we get it or not. We're talking about what happens if we don't get it. I, I don't think anyone really has that information here. I think we all collectively have that information, and the public deserves the information. They deserve it as quickly as we can get it to them. But I, I think it would be a good ideal to have something specific to this project, and then we collectively come together and get our questions answered internally, and then come out as, as a school board and the superintendent and the treasurer to give the people answers. But, but I, I think we may cause ourselves more harm than not this way. Thank you.
Thank you, member Harrison. Superintendent, to member Molinar's questioning, or treasurer, either, you have the floor.
Just to give you an update, we did meet with, as a follow-up to the board meeting, the last one we had, with the Pfeiffer and also the Miller-South staff, with the objective to see if we could look at the designs and make some decisions that could help to lower the cost of the project. And that work was done with the architects. And now we have, as you were saying, member Molinar, we're going to go back and meet with the committee, and that does include the architects and our APS staff that will be reviewing it to see how we can bring the price of the total project down with the feedback that we received from both staffs. And then that information will be taken to the finance committee so that they can see the impact on the project. We will also, I have also asked the architects to come forth with a ti, an updated timeline as best they could, can at this time, because what we do not want to do is also add to the cost of the project by continuing to update documents without really having a clear plan with the LFI funds. So, but we are ready to go. We have a committee in place, and we are moving the work forward. We're just on pause right now until we have our next meeting, which is June 16th, next Monday, and then we will report to the finance committee.
Thank you, Superintendent. Treasurer, anything to add or to?
Just that, it, it, it's critical that we work with the city as quickly as we can to determine the LFI funding, because otherwise, the project is essentially at a standstill until we know exactly what we're designing. Very difficult for the architects to design something without a budget. So that, that's just a critical piece that we need to make sure we get done as fast as we can. Mr. Fricker and I are doing our best to move that process along, so we get the arbitrage number, and then another, we'll, we'll need to convene JBR once again to finalize the final dollars, where they, how, how much of that LFI money comes our way.
Okay, thank you. Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if anyone has the answer to this question, because I think this is a question a lot of people have. When it comes to these LFI funds, is this a matter of both the district and the city voting on that? Because it sounds like we've been waiting on the city for a while to say what it is, and that's, I'm just still not clear on whose decision it is about the LFI funds. Where does the decision lie?
It's probably, honestly, a question for, it's probably a legal question, but the LFI money's pretty clear that it must be used for work on buildings here in the district, for infrastructure or new building in the district. So that money couldn't be used just to say, put in general fund and go use it to, you know, buy lawn equipment or something. You could, you can't do that. So it's very scripted. I, I, I do believe that, you know, we'll get this worked out quickly, but I understand the angst it causes when you don't exactly know for sure what that dollar amount is, and I understand that.
Are there any other questions from board members? Just as a quick follow-up, with this committee, I'm as the treasurer, with the capital improvements and capital projects that we do as far as building, you also, with this committee, the superintendent is talking, excuse me, speaking of, are aligned with that committee because, to keep the finance, so that you, you should be accountable both ways, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the treasurer's department needs to make sure that we have the money, we track the money, we pay the purchase orders, et cetera, et cetera. So there'll be things called change orders over and over again, and every construction project there always is. There's a five percent contingency in that, but we're doing a project under CMR, Construction Manager at Risk, which means when the construction management company puts their bid in to do this project, if it goes over, for whatever reason, it's on the CMR and not on, not on us as the consumer. So it'll be the treasurer's job to make, we're not running, outrunning the, the project or supervising the project, but we are making sure that all the money's accounted for and that we're staying on pace not to break the budget.
Right. And that's what I wanted to clarify, because that's a, that is directly connected with your role, so I wanted to make sure.
So for example, if something came in and it looked like it was an over expenditure, we would have to go back to that committee and say, hey, wait a minute, you know, I don't know what you're going to do, but you're going over budget. And maybe at that point, the CMR eats it, but that's why school districts now almost exclusively go CMR.
Thank you. I remember you talking about that earlier on with this project. And, and it's also for accountability of the time, if it's, if it's going over timing or it's a late start because it cost us more money.
Yes.
So that's part of that treasury accountability too, right?
Correct. I mean, in terms of letting, letting you know what's happening. Yes, sure, for sure.
And when is this starting, when is it breaking?
Yes.
This is the, this is what it's costing us.
Yeah. And, and that, that should, you know, typically, as member Molinar mentioned, a committee would be formed, and it's already in the process of forming. And when the CMR is on board, then the CMR and architects will join that committee as well. And it, it will meet with, you know, I, it depends on the regularity, but typically, those large committees meet at least once a month. And then there are weekly meetings that whoever's in charge of the project, the district representative, would be at weekly meetings.
Thank you. Member Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. So I, I just heard you say, I'm, I'm just reacting right now, I just heard you say that the committee meetings typically meet once a month, so as a new committee is forming, I'm going to assume this committee will meet once a month, but for the, that say this year, how many times has a committee met this year so far?
I can't answer that.
All right. Member Hall, you had a statement or question?
Thank you, Madam President. All I said was, who can? I don't know, it just, it just feels like, you know, we're over nineteen million, we're in a hole nineteen million, and then it's on somebody else to do the construction. It just seems like so many, like excuses are being made, and who, I feel like if you're the person who is, not I feel like, because it's not about feelings, if you're the person that's going to be, you know, checking the checks and all of that stuff, as President Carla stated earlier, you should be a part of these meetings so that later on, you don't have to come back and figure out everything later. Like, it should just be a joint venture. So Superintendent, are you able to answer how many times the committee has met?
Just address the chair.
I'm sorry, sorry. Madam President, yeah, if we could just find out, you know, who, who knows these answers?
Thank, thank you, member Hall. Member Harrison?
Go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I want to be brief. These are questions that we have asked. These are questions that we have continued to ask. I, I know I've been asking them before I came on the board, and I think we are where we are now. I, I think we are where we are, and, you know, we've heard from the public, we, we got a situation, and I think at this point, we, we have to move forward. But I, I think for the last year, these questions have been on the floor. These questions have been presented in open meetings. These questions have been presented in finance meetings. You can only get the numbers that you got, but now we have the numbers, and we, we need to build schools. And we, we, we have to find the money to build the schools. So I think we are where we are, but I just want to say that we have asked these questions. And I don't think calling the treasurer and, and saying to him that he hasn't answered the questions. We've asked the questions. The committee's asked the questions. It was asked in an open board meeting. The architect didn't answer the question. It was asked the architect, how much is this? And architect said, we'll get back with you. That was in February. So I think we are where we are now, and I think we have to move forward and find the money. We owe it to a community. We, we made a promise, and we, we should honor that promise. So I think we are where we are, and I would just ask that we would be able to make a decision. We would get all the information we can. Maybe we need to have a meeting just for this, but the questions have been asked. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Superintendent, and then Vice President Alexander, Superintendent?
Upon my appointment as superintendent, this has been part of my work. And so again, trying to be fully transparent, information will continue to be brought through the process that's in place. If I'm not mistaken, you would prefer it to go through the finance committee and then to the board. It makes sense for it to go to the finance committee and then to the board. And so I did ask these very questions, and that's how I believe this conversation started. And we are just trying to move forward. And so once we have the information, June 16th, we will come back to the finance committee for a presentation so that we're all on the same page. And that's the best we can do, is just move forward from this point.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Alexander?
Superintendent answered my question. I was going to say, right now, where are we at, where, where are we at? But from this point forward, get everything we can to make sure every board member, the community members, everyone knows where we're at, so we can start on the project, because we don't want to delay it any further, because we're already delayed it enough. So just move forward, get the, get all the answers to everyone, so everyone knows, and then we can keep moving forward, bulldoze this thing along and get that building done and get it out of the way. Thank you.
All right. No other questions? Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Okay, next, on the agenda, we need a motion under the treasurer's report, and this motion is the approval of the wreckers destruction resolution. Is there a motion to approve wreckers destruction, the wreckers destruction resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Sykes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing on Dr. Thompson, roll call, vote, please.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next on the agenda is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for May 27th of this year?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Harrison. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by member Hall. Any discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I received a number of emails of people who had questions. We had, in, in the May 27th meeting, we had a number of...
We had, in the May 27 meeting, we had a number of times that we kind of went around. And so I believe that this has been adjusted and communicated in the minutes, but I was wondering if anyone would be able to speak to what is in the minutes, just to confirm, because I did get a bunch of emails of people concerned about the votes that we made in section 21.
Thank you, member Molinar. Dr. Thompson, did you want to address that?
Sure, there was, do you remember the number off the top of your head, Ruth?
21.2.
21.4, I reported, I miscounted it, so that's on me. And I reported it at 3.3 and a fail, and it wasn't that. So that was, that's on me. I didn't catch it, I thought I had it right, that's what I said back to the board, but when people went back and watched the tape, you could see that was not the, that wasn't the right vote total. Does that make sense? And I believe it's been corrected.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Thompson. That was, I believe it's Dr. Molinar's question, was it, like, how does it reflect now? And I believe it's been reflected properly, that the correction was made after the emails came in. So thank you, that was a relevant question, thank you, Dr. Molinar. Any other questions, any other discussion? All right. Dr. Thompson?
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Abstain.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0 with one abstention.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next, is there a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes for the May 30 meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Hall, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Vice President Alexander, any discussion? Seeing and hearing on, Dr. Thompson, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Abstain.
Mrs. Sykes?
Abstain.
Motion carries 4-0 with three abstentions.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next is our personnel recommendations, Superintendent Outley.
Thank you, President Jackson. Starting with section 10, professional staff and administrators, does the board have any questions?
Member Molinar?
You just said section 10, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, yes, I have a question on section 10.4, and I see this again in a few other sections. 10.4 says, I wish to recommend employment of all present and future professional staff for extended time for effective July 1, 20, sorry, I'm skipping, but effective July 1, July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. That is a full year of time? Is that what that is intended to be?
Correct, it's for the school year.
Have we ever?
So, yes, this is what, an annual, so as our staff had to participate in extended time opportunities, we do not have to bring them, we bring them permission for the whole group, and then their payment is submitted. So each school creates plans for extended time opportunities that's been approved, and this is allowing us to pay them for that extended time that they do.
Yes, Dr. Molinar.
Thanks, so what is that amount?
It could vary by school, I mean...
Because I see how much per hour we're paying them, but I don't see how much total we are authorizing to pay them, and that's the number as a board member who is, you know, trying to be a good fiduciary here, that's the number I'm really interested in is how much money are we authorizing from this vote?
Okay, I'm gonna let our human, we're gonna tag team and try to really just take our time and explain this, because it can get complicated, but this is what we do annually, so this is not your first time approving our extended time requests.
So every, so the teaching and learning department has extended time hours that they utilize via different funds or grants, as well as our CCAA and OSI. I'm gonna let Keith Lickety, who's our director of the Office of School Improvement, give an example, because a lot of extended time comes through his office due to buildings having Title I budgets.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lick. And please, when you come tonight, please wait to be recognized by the chair, and the chair calls the people to speak and follow up, okay? Thank you, Mr. Lick.
All right, good evening, President Jackson, Superintendent Outley, and the board. So, yeah, so I can use our federal programs office as an example, so when we receive our Title I allocation, we distribute that out to buildings on a per pupil amount. And so we just finished in the month of May assigning how many dollars each building will get. So I would say, for the most part, buildings spend about 85 to 90% of their funds on salaries, but we offer during their program design, opportunities to pay teachers extended time for various activities. So one example might be for family engagement nights, they want to pay teachers to plan and present lessons to parents. We also provide extra planning time, we know that there's limited time in the day for teachers to collaborate, so we'll give them opportunities after school and we'll pay them extended time to create lesson plans and activities for students. What this blanket board, so I know you're looking for a dollar amount, so I know, but what this blanket opportunity does for us, it lets us move a little bit more quickly. So imagine already, the building principal and the teachers have to submit their plan to the school improvement, we look to make sure that the work is aligned to the vision of the district, and it's gonna move the work forward, and then we say, okay, you can do that work, they have to share with us the outcomes of that work, what does it look like, how are they, you know, gonna move forward with whatever they're designing? A dollar amount, I wasn't prepared to share that today, but I know I've been running some other numbers, you know, we have, I don't know where my mathematicians are, but, you know, we have about a $15 million federal budget, you know, less than 5% of that is even on professional development activities, and even less than that is for extended time. I could bring that, you know, figure to another meeting, but, you know, for example, any given school that we're supporting with our title fund dollars probably has $10,000 to $20,000 in their budget for supplies, extended time, things of that nature. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. All right, superintendent?
If there's no additional questions for section 10, section 11 miscellaneous, section 12 supplemental contracts.
Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I was looking at this and to Dr. Molinar's point, I was trying to look at extended contracts, supplemental contracts, I know like with the coaching and the programming, we get a list of who it is and how much they're getting. So when I was listening to Mr. Lick, I got kind of confused now. So the supplemental contracts, are we dealing with, do we do it that way because we deal with different funds?
Not, well, first, okay, when you say the supplemental contracts, that's different. Those are positions that's in our agreement, collective bargaining agreement, that people can apply for, and we pay a set salary for, and so they go through the board that way. The, these funds that we're talking about as far as our extended funds, these, the building, at the building level, they create their own budget through their Title I funds, which are grant funded, to say, this is what we think we need to move our building forward to best meet the needs of our scholars. They create a budget, we have a team that oversees the budget, makes sure it's aligned to the work of the district, and then they let them spend against that budget that you heard Title I provides. And the budget is based on a per pupil allowance. So one is collective bargaining based about, you know, positions and contracts that way, and the other is building based around school improvement efforts.
Okay, so what, okay, because we definitely have to start doing something different financially. So if we don't approve extended contracts for a year without a dollar amount, okay, say we don't approve that, what does that look like to the district?
Okay, so these are federal dollars that are given to us for this purpose. So we do not want to, and if we don't use it, we lose it, so I'll let, if you're okay with Mr. Lick coming back, because that's a valid question, and it is about, we want to answer it.
Can I clarify that?
Yes.
Member Harrison, please.
I don't want to say that we are not using the money.
Yeah.
Okay, so not that we don't use it, but if we find a different way to approve it, like you said, if Garfield submits a budget, I'm saying Garfield because it's the best high school in the district, so if Garfield, can you talk to Mr. Jones, please? So if Garfield submits a $36,000 budget, and Temple, if Booker submits a $36,000 budget, okay, so then we know we're approving those schools their budget, but we can see it. Does that, because I see, I do have a problem just approving something for a year that doesn't have a dollar amount, but I understand it's designated funds, the school needs the funds, so we don't want to create more of a problem than not, but we still want to be accountable. So I guess that's what I'm looking for, I don't know who I was talking to, Madam President, so you can...
Mr. Lick, I think that per pupil cost, you might want to get into it.
Sure, you know, I think, I hear you and I understand what you're saying, because what this recommendation is allowing me to do is to move more quickly and for you to entrust in me that I'm gonna set those budget parameters and hold the building principals accountable, so that would definitely be a different way to think of it. I know Superintendent Outley and I were just talking about making sure that we have very tight controls around this, and I believe she already has a meeting on my calendar to make sure that we talk about extended time and how it's being spent. So I don't think I can answer that question alone, but know, I guess what I would like you to know is that we have some very strict procedures about how we budget and identify extended time opportunities during our federal review, we were highlighted, and they asked us to share with other districts across the state with all the checks and balances that we do have. I know that I can speak that way in federal programs.
Thank you, and I was at that meeting, so excellent. Member Molinar?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I am hearing that there is a budget, I think the concern is that we don't know what the budget is, and you might not even know that we've never seen that budget and what's being done with it, and I don't want it to sound like we're picking on 10.6 and 10.6 alone, because I was gonna say this again, at 15.4 and at 16.8, you know, I don't know if that's all from the same department or different places, but Title I funds can be spent a lot of different ways, and this feels like a blank check for Title I, and I think having a little bit more information might be helpful. I didn't know that there was a meeting about it, but I'm wondering, since this does start July 1, and we do have another meeting before July 1, if perhaps those three items, I'd like to make a motion to move those three items, 10, 6, 15, 4, and 16, 8, to the next meeting so we can get some more information about how much money this actually is.
I would just say, I know for the work that we're, so one of the, I'm sorry.
No.
So we have a lot of work happening this summer, the work is not stopping, and so, for example, we have summer programming happening, which I believe is gonna lapse over past July 1. So without that, we will have to bring a lot of people probably back to board very quickly to keep that extended time running. So that's how we pay for teachers who are also doing our summer, our summer work, their extended time is in there. I think I'm rambling now, but let me say this, I know our budget grid is due to DEW by July 1. They're running a little bit behind, so we're hoping by July 15 that the budget grid will open up and that we can enter it. So I know before July 1, I will be able to tell you exactly how much we've allocated of our whole allocation into extended time activities, because that's what we've been planning through the month of May. I just don't know, Mary, if you're thinking, I'm not sure what extended time opportunities are happening post-June 30, if that's gonna cause any problems to our staff.
Thank you, superintendent.
Summer school.
We're good through June 30?
Yeah, we're, you said till the next board meeting?
I know, right, we're good through June 30 because of the last...
For the next board meeting, to give us sufficient time and to answer any additional questions.
All right, member Hall? All right, thank you. I believe, member Molinar, did you make a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Okay, so it's a motion on the floor to remove, it was three items, could you state the motion?
Sorry, my motion was to move 10.6, 15.4, and 16.8 to our next meeting.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by member Molinar to move 10.4, 10.6, and 10.8 until, wait, I'm sorry.
10, 6, 15, 4, and 16, 8.
10, 6, 15, 4, and 16, 8, to our next board meeting, thank you. And it's been seconded by member Harrison, any discussion? Seeing and hearing on, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Ms. Autry?
No.
Motion carries 4-3.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next, we have the approval of the personnel recommendation, superintendent?
We are on 13 substitute teachers, section 13.
Section 14 tutors. Section 15, support staff. Section 16, paraprofessionals. Section 17, child nutrition. Section 18, maintenance operations, transportation. Section 19 is security. There are no items under Section 20, students. Section 21.1, Resolution MOU between APS and SEI, Local 1. At this time, I wish to recommend approval of the Personnel Recommendations presented in categories 10 through 21, minus 10.6, 15.4, and 16.8.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Personnel Recommendations.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Autry to approve the Personnel Recommendations by Superintendent, minus 10.6, 15.4, and 16.8, and it's been properly seconded by Member Harrison. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Now, we have the approval of the recommendations from 21.2, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Jackson. Does the Board have any questions about the Division Recommendations, Resolutions, and motions for Section 22?
Yes, Member Molinar.
Thank you, Madam President. In 22, I see Board Policy Development, but it says, the, being presented for a second reading. I was wondering if the Legal Committee could maybe comment on this? Are we voting on this item at the second reading or as it's in here?
Yes, Vice President Alexander.
It's always done on the third reading. So, this is having here is the second reading, so you know it's the second reading. They'll come forward to a third reading, and that's when we'll vote.
Thank you, did you have a follow-up, Molinar?
Yes, follow-up, thank you. Just, this is not typically how it is presented in our agenda, so I was a little confused. And then also, the second reading, especially here for the Parents' Bill of Rights, from my recollection from the last Legal Policy Committing, that item is actually still in discussion. So, I mean, it's still not the third reading. It's good for them, for people to see, but usually we see this in the committee reports for the second reading.
It has been there sometimes, too, but, you know, I mean, it's just for general information at that point, but when it comes to the third reading, then it'll go under the, the Policy Committee, and then we'll read it at that point in time. Or we, just so, Madam President, just so it's clear, it's been kind of done so many different ways for next, so many past years. It's just, we should just do it one way, and that's it.
Thank you. Superintendent.
At this time, I wish to recommend the approval of the Division Recommendations, Resolutions, and Motions in Section 22.
Is there a motion to approve the Division Recommendations and Resolutions and Motions in Section 22?
It's moved.
It's been moved by Member Hall, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Vice President Alexander. Any discussion? Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the committee, just for a point of clarification. So, if we are voting on this, and it is just a second reading, and that is not the intent of the committee, then, once we vote on it, then it's voted on, that's it. So, I just, I just wanted clarification on what, what's your intent? Do you want this to go to a third reading? Or do you want it to pass on the second reading? Because that's what we're voting on.
Vice President Alexander, yes.
We will go to a third, third reading. All policies have to go through a third reading unless we suspend the rules and have it done beforehand. So, if we need to, Madam President, we'll move it from this section and put it into other section. Ms. Carter has a question.
Ms. Carter, come.
So, for this section, I believe, excuse me, Board President, Vice President and Board, for this particular item and section, you're just voting on motions and resolution? And it says what it is right before the item, and then there's nothing before the item. So, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear on that, but I hear what you're saying as it relates to, let's see if we can put it in a different section next time, so that would help with making sure it's not confusing as it relates to when it's time for the vote. But I just wanted to clarify that the word "motion" or "resolution" was not in front of that particular item.
Yes, Vice President Alexander.
Yes, and, and Ms. Carter, you're right, but maybe we should do it the other way. We used to do it a different way, where it all came under the Policy Committee, and I think that would make it a little easier so everyone would understand. So, maybe we can, if everyone's okay voting today, we'll vote this way today, but from next meeting forward, we'll, we'll put it under Policy Committee.
Thank, okay, thank you, Vice President Alexander. All right. Treasurer?
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
No on 22.5, yes on the balance.
Got it. Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Okay, so I, on, it is 7-0, and then on 22.5, it's, it is 6-1. Motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next, we will have Business, Business Affairs Recommendations.
Does the Board have any questions for Section 23?
I'm sorry, Member Hall and then Member Harrison.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. For 23.1, the company that's doing this, was there an RFP that went out for this? Or is this just a company that we currently use? And my second question, I'll just wrap both questions in. Is this imperative that it has to be done now? Or can it wait till next year?
Okay, Ms. Falk.
Good evening, President, Vice President, members of the Board, and Superintendent. For 23.1, there was an RFP that went out. This was the lowest responsive bid. In this particular case, this is an annual repurposing of these parking lots on a five-year basis. So, this was the plan for this year. Should you determine to not approve this item, it would go out again next year. It would make the bids longer because we'd go to the next section, and the pricing probably could be higher. But this was a very aggressive bid, and we did receive the lowest, most responsible bidder to present to you tonight. And then, did you have another one, I thought?
Please just address the question instead of chair.
I apologize.
I think you answered the question, and let's, Member Hall, did you have a follow-up? Yes, please.
No, you answered both questions, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, is this, is this the five-year, like the fifth year? Well, this has to be done, so five years ago it was done, and this is year five now?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Falk, Member Hall, Member Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I want to speak about 2316. 2316, we, a few months ago, there was an article in the newspaper where students were complaining about the conditions of some of their facilities. And just wanted to say to the students, we heard you. And this represents right now the start of better conditions at Kenmore Fieldhouse. Nine years ago, they, a pipe burst, and they lost all of their athletic equipment. And my understanding is just January, a pipe burst, and they do not have water out there. And currently, this fixes that situation, and it also fixes, repairs the situation in a way that we don't have to worry about the water, the pipes freezing and bursting. So, just wanted to shout out to the kids at Garfield, not, not because, but because every child deserves adequate facilities. So, want to shout out to them to say, we heard you, and this represents what they spoke to. So, thank you, Ms. Falk, and thank you, Madam Superintendent, on behalf of them Golden Rams.
All right, thank you for that very well said sentiment, Member Harrison, very well said, exceptional. All right, any other discussions? Okay. All right, Dr. Thompson.
I wish to recommend the approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in Category 23.
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Thompson.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Wait, 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 sorry, sorry, I need a motion.
We need a motion in a second.
I thought I already, but I didn't. Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs Recommendation in Category 23? As presented, thank you. It's been moved by Member Hall, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Molinar, any discussion? Thank you, seeing and hearing that now, Dr. Thompson, roll call vote, please.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
I'm staying on 23.4, yes on the rest.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0 on 23.4 and 7-0 on the balance.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next, we will have the committee report, starting with Legal Contracts and Board Policy.
Thank you, Madam President. The Legal Contracts and Board Policy Committee met on June 2nd. During the meeting, there were representatives from Akron Public Schools, the City of Akron, and Youth Success Summit who presented on the Newly Developed Facilities Handbook. The Revised Handbook is designed to simplify the process for reserving and renting space in the community learning centers. The handbook, the handbook along with the materials was emailed to all Board members for your review if you have any questions concerning the booklet to get back to Ruth Ryman directly. The committee also has on its fourth, second reading today, Electronic Equipment Policy and the Parents' Bill of Rights Policy. The Parents' Bill of Rights Policy has been updated with additional language based on previous committee discussions. Specifically, the updates include classifying language to define the terms promptly, ensuring that shared update, understanding of the response sponsors' expectations. The committee will be meeting again on June 16, and we will be bringing these, these policies for a third reading on, on June 23rd meeting. On the 16th, we will be meeting and discussing the nepotism policy, which is undergoing, which is undergoing further revisions for its final reading, policy purchasing and billing, bidding, procurement, federal grants and funds, vendor, vendors, relationships, independent contract operation and service providers policy, honorary diploma policy, and the public complaint policy. Again, the committee will meet on June 16 at 5:30 in this room. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Next, we will have the Finance and Capital Management.
Thank you, Madam President, Madam President, and members of the Board. So, the Finance Committee will meet on June 16, which is next Monday, at 4:30 here in the Board Meeting Room. And as you heard, the Superintendent and the Treasurer will be presenting to us information as it relates to the Kenmore Project and their additional information that they received. I think at that time, Madam President, member of the Board, that it will be time for us to make a decision so that the community will feel some way comfortable with how we plan on proceeding. And I will be prepared to, to say how I will vote once we hear that information, because I just think it's time for us, us to do that. So, that's next Monday, June 16, 4:30 here in the Board.
Thank you. Next, Instructional Policy and Student Achievement Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I jump into that, I just wanted to acknowledge the Legal Policy meeting where we reviewed the new CLC usage handbook. I just wanted to thank the team who put all of that together. I mentioned in that meeting, and I'll mention here, that is just one of the biggest items that people ask me about, and it has not been updated since 2001. And so, long overdue, really good work. Encouraging my colleagues to look over that policy handbook so that we can move forward and they can implement it. I know it went from 26 pages to 11 pages, and there is a lot of things that they consolidated. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I should have left time for, because I, for point of clarity to everyone. Typically, I should have asked whether there are any questions or comments after Vice President Alexander spoke. So, pardon the interruption to you, Member Autry, but I wanted to clarify while, that it was my area that did not allow that, so you didn't have an opportunity to speak, so you're doing it now, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And so, again, thank you to that team who put it all together. Instructional Policy met on that same day. We had several presentations, K through 12 science adoption from Katrina Halasa. The committee found that the current curriculum had several critical issues that were impacting instruction and student learning. I know that they did get a refund on that, so thank you. But they decided to move to the Savis Interactive Curriculum, with the key factor being that the teachers were already familiar with that platform because they use it for math. The adoption will be District Y, K through 2, and will provide in-depth coverage of the Ohio Science Standards at each grade level, which will lead to better preparation for the 5th grade OST. Also, we had presentations for College and Career Academy textbook adoptions with the focus on digital resources that will integrate with Google Classrooms and our other software that we currently use. It will align with web exams, CTSO, and be hands-on. The pathways that will be affected by this adoption are education pathways, Energy Environmental Protection Pathway, Academy Prep, Entrepreneurship and Marketing Pathway, and our Family and Consumer Science Pathways. Lastly, we received a very interesting presentation from the Trust for Public Lands Community School Yard Project. This initiative is to have our CLC spaces better benefit the community by creating green spaces on the unused outside land of our CLCs. One of the TPL's missions is to work with the school community by having students redesign the current schoolyard space, making it green and accessible to the community to use after school and on weekends. By having the students co-design the. By having the students co-design the space with partners who already have that expertise, students are exposed to new career pathways. TPL assists with fundraising, and the proposed sites are Jennings and the New North High School. And there was some discussion just about honoring the soccer culture of those communities. And also, once these projects would be done, it would be up to the district to sustain them. So it's important that we're just kept aware as they're planning those calls. So they will be coming to us with an MOU if the board is in agreement with that. And so that concludes my report.
Thank you, member Autry. Next, we have, I'm sorry, member Hall, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Also, at the Instructional Policy meeting, there was a gentleman, he was a sensei with the karate dojo, and I would like for us to really look into that, because he's trying to provide a free service to our students that's not costing us anything to learn karate. I was a karate kid myself, growing up, and it does give you discipline. It gives you discipline, it gives you confidence, and you're able to stand up to that bully, not saying you're going to do a kado on them, but you build the confidence learning karate. So I would like for us to look into that and see how we can incorporate it into our schools, especially when it's a free service for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for that, member Hall. Any other questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none. Dr. Thompson? Oh, we don't have to vote on anything. We do have unfinished business, and that is the approval of the architect design for Bookto CLC press box and track. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the architect design services for the Bookto CLC press box replacement and track renovation project?
So moved?
It's been moved by member Harrison, is there a second? It's been second by member Hall, any discussion? Member Autry.
Thank you. As we talk about facilities, et cetera, I just want to thank the district for allowing us to move forward. You know, I've spoken several times about the conditions of the concession booth over there. That's actually condemned with no running water. So I know some might not think that's a priority, because it's sports, but it is. And I know the community is grateful, they've told me they're grateful, so I just want to acknowledge that this work is moving forward. I know there was conversations about having the students involved, I know there was a legal opinion attached to this stating that that is not advisable. However, I know what we want to get done can be done, and so I'm hoping that that can still move forward with students involved on some level. Thank you.
Thank you, member Autry. Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Autry and I had talked about that, I was going to just let her have it, because she's 1040, I know she's fought hard and a long time for this press box. And we've heard some comments today from Miller South students, Kenmore community. I think this is an and-and. I think that we don't have to put one community, because one community doesn't have something, we don't have to take from another community. And I just want to mention this, because I believe that sports is just as important as college and career academies. I believe that some people, they may never play an instrument, they may never get good grades, but sports, we heard Xyla West, a student from Firestone, say that it was track that kept her in school. So I don't think we should look at our facilities. Bookto has been put off, this has been put off at Bookto for 10 years. 10 years they have been asking for a press box, they need a press box. So I think we can do everything, we can find a way of supporting all communities. And I know we're not supposed to say this word, but I'm going to say it, equity, equity, equity. Everybody gets what they need. And I think that this, right here, is a example of what equity is.
Thank you, member Harrison. All right, any others? All right, seeing none, Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Thompson. There is no new business. However, there is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the employment dismissal and discipline of a public employee and/or officials, and 121.22G3 to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Hall, is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Vice President Alexander, any discussion? Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is, Madam President, and let me just say, point of personal privilege, because it's not ongoing into executive session. If I could just say that, I just noted, and I did not mean for this to pass by without recognizing that, that our Chief of Staff, tonight, that we recommended that she now be promoted to Executive Director for School Leadership, and I just want to thank her for her work that she's done as Chief of Staff, and also the work that she's done in HR. She's been our one-woman show, and I'm just appreciative of the work that she has done. We may not have always agreed with it, but we've had good conversations about it, and we, I think, moved this district alone because of Mrs. Carter and all of her work. So I'm looking forward, I'm glad you're not leaving us, so I'm looking forward to seeing you around here on a daily basis as our Executive Director of School Leadership. Congratulations, and I'm very proud of you.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President.
No, thank you, member Sykes, quite appropriate. Now, for the Pope, thank you.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
And Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
We stand in recess at 7:39 for executive session.
Welcome, we stand back in session at 9:13. Before we get to that, I just want to make a correction that when we removed the sections from the agenda, it should have said correction to 10 point, instead of 10.6, everyone was saying it should be 10.4. So instead of 10.6, it should have been removed 10.4. Okay, so just note that correction for the record, thank you Ruth. Next, is there a motion to approve the settlement agreement in 28.1?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Autry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, standing and hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Our next meeting will be Monday, June 23rd, 2025. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Hall, is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Vice President Alexander, any discussion? We, roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, we stand adjourned at 9:15 PM.